Call the meeting by order. Welcome back for another session of the Fairfield Town Council. So we have tonight, if anybody who's watching at home or in and in person, we have our city, our town clerk, Christine Keller, councillor John Pichotti, councillor Stephanie Thibodeau, town manager, Michelle Floyling, councillor Peter Lawrence, and myself, councillor and chair, Matt Townsend. So first order of business are public announcements. The details may be found at www.fairfieldme.com. Fairfield is hiring with openings in the town office, police, and fire. Number two, Fairfield has volunteer openings for the following ad hoc committees. Building Advisory Committee and Committee to address, and we have a, I'm sorry. We have a Building Advisory Committee, there we go, and Committee to address the ramifications of PFAS contamination. If you're interested in serving your community, please complete an appointment application form available online or at the town office. And I would, we'll all put another plug in for that again as we get farther along, but I think that is a very important thing, so we'll talk about that more. Number three, the Concerts in the Park season starts on July 7th, coming right up through August 25th, Fridays from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. The town office and all non-emergency services will be closed on July 4th, on the next Tuesday in observance of Independence Day. And number five, the town would like to recognize and wish a happy centurion birthday to Howard Knox, who turned 100 on June 4th. Second order of business, public hearings to hear public comments on an application for a special amusement permit renewal for the purposes of music and dancing submitted by River Jack Tavern located at 230 Main Street in Fairfield. Any comments?
Nobody here.
Any on?
No, no impediments.
Moving on to the third order of business.
Can you declare that closed, please?
So I declare the public hearings now closed. Third order of business, public comments limited to three minutes. Members of the public may speak to the council or request opportunity to speak on a specific item that is on the agenda, or email comments for council to info@fairfieldme.com by 4:00 p.m., day of meeting. Submitted content may be read aloud at this time. Do we have any submitted content? And seeing nobody online. Yes, we move on to the fourth order of business. Which are reports from the staff and committees. Our first one is our town manager reports. Michelle?
And just so you're aware, Ken from River Jack's Tavern is on via Zoom. If when we get to that, if you have any questions for him.
Yeah, well, it's not showing up on our screen.
Yeah, no, it won't because it's whoever talked last, that's what shows up there.
Okay.
So you don't actually see everybody that's in the room, but I can see you. So just so you know when that gets here. All right, so it's been a while since we have met, so I have a very long list for you. In addition to the 4th of July, the town office itself is actually closed on the 3rd. Due to already previous scheduled vacations and being short of staff, the few remaining folks that were going to be in the building have opted to take a vacation day for that day. So we will just have, the office will be closed that day. But the library will still be open, Public Works will still be here, everybody will still be around. Okay, and then, so on May 25th, the Legislative Policy Committee through MMA had its final meeting. We have been weighing in on other necessary items via email as this last, this session is trying to wrap up and they're trying to push through as many bills as they can before they end. June 3rd was National Trail Day event, which was a complete washout, but councillor Thibodeau can update you on that, because also on June 6th, the Economic Community Development Committee met, so there'll be an update on that. June 8th, I did attend a special presentation at CMP in Augusta for municipalities. This event was aimed at fostering meaningful dialogue around subjects relevant to municipalities such as storm restoration, streetlights, vegetation management, and CMP operations with a tour of the Energy Control Center. If you ever get an opportunity to visit the Energy Control Center at CMP, I highly recommend it. It was one of the most fascinating things I've ever seen. And then I was able to meet with President/CEO Joe Pierington and the VP of Electrical Operations, Adam, no, I'm gonna botch it, but it's DeRoseer, I believe. It was a good meeting, we had a lot of good conversation about what actually happens on CMP's end when we have like major storms and major outages, or even just regular, you know, limb falls off a tree, that kind of stuff, and how that reporting all works and things that folks can do to work well together amongst our departments in there. So it really was a good meeting. I was actually the only municipality, Fairfield was the only municipality that was represented that day, so I had all of the staff to myself, so it worked out really well. And then, June 15th, MMA's Executive Director Kathy Conlaw had asked me if I would attend a National League of Cities Zoom call with the Delaware Senator Tom Karp, who is Chairman of the U.S. Senate Committee on Environment and Public Works. There is some new legislation being put forward that would provide liability protections for municipal drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater utilities, landfills, and solid waste facilities, airports, and fire suppression entities that are passive receivers of materials that contain PFAS chemicals. The Executive Director and I both were able to speak to the Senator regarding issues here in the state of Maine, one being waste treatment plant sludge, and then I was able to express some of our concerns as well regarding funding and funding capacities for rural. Because the legislation regarding PFAS that's being done at the federal level is only for public drinking water and does not touch on private wells at all. So out of the three people that were able to actually speak with the Senator in that meeting, MMA was number two and I was number three. So it was, it was good to actually be heard. But what they're trying to do is to ensure that entities that say you sprayed firefighting foam and it had PFAS in it and it contaminated an area, that the fire department itself wouldn't be held liable for that contamination because they were required at that time to use that kind of foam. Just be reassured though that the town of Fairfield does not have any firefighting foam that has any PFAS in it, and we've never discharged any in town that ever had any in it. So there's more to come on that front, and it'll be discussed probably quite a bit over the next coming months. On June 16th, KRDA had its 25th anniversary celebration at Colby College Alumni Building. Speakers included Governor Mills, Brian Clark, who is the VP of Planning at Colby College, Rick Boudreaux, who is the Administrative Director of Operations at Maine General Health, Greg Zimba, who is the Senior Diversity Recruiter at T-Mobile, and Dr. Anna and attorney Brandon O'Keefe from O'Keefe's Dentistry. Those are some of the larger business entities that are located within First Park, so that was a very good event. June 20th, I attended the Main State Chamber breakfast that was held in Waterville. It's an annual breakfast that's held so that updates can be given about the legislative work that the chamber's been working on. They've been doing a lot of work on this paid family medical leave piece, so that just recently was going through. The 22nd of June was KRDA's General Assembly meeting. This was my last meeting as the organization's president. It's been a wonderful two years, but I'm happy to now be rolling into the past president realm. We did receive our dividend check for the '22-'23 fiscal year in the amount of $26,960. Our appropriation, our assessment for this year was $22,793, so this is actually a profit for us of $4,167. So this is the second year in a row we've actually received a profit from KRDA, so after 25 years, it's about done. And then, the 27th, which was yesterday, was KB Coggs Annual Meeting and Budget Adoption that was held up in Unity. Couple of project updates for you and pieces that have happened in the last month. At the beginning of June, we discovered we had a ruptured hot water tank here at the community center. That was discovered because the electric bill that we received for the community center was extreme. We were able to get CMP to give us a $568 and some change credit due to a sudden and severe incident. We're currently waiting on estimates so we can mitigate the water and the mold damage that is in that room. It's going to involve, we believe, some asbestos removal. And then once that is complete and the room's back dried out, we're going to be actually installing a camera in the boiler room so that we have better eyes on for that building, that section of the building. And then we'll also be replacing the hot water tank. And then the work on the Green Road culvert does continue. It is nearing the end, but we will not predict when that will be until we actually know that there is asphalt on the ground and we're gonna open that up. Mother Nature is not being kind and causing many, many delays, so. And that is it for me.
Yeah. Thanks. Looking, it looks like your microphone is shut off.
It is on Zoom, but they can hear me.
Well, just talking about these.
Right, so the way Zoom works.
Zoom, we got, these are Zoom here.
Right, but the microphone that you see that's shut off is the one that's on my computer.
Okay.
This microphone, I think, is still on and folks can still hear me. But if I open up the one on Zoom, I'm gonna have tons of feedback, so.
Michelle, thanks for that report. I was going to ask about Green Road, so thanks for that update. Any other questions from Michelle? The town clerk election report is next. Christine?
So for the June 13th, 2023, MSAD 49 School Board and Budget Validation Referendum, there was a total of 4,539 registered voters as of that day. The number of voters that cast ballots was 111, and making a turnout for 2.44%. We facilitated 11 absentees, nine were cast. We had one new voter and one spoiled ballot. Noteworthy for this election is, as is typical in an odd year when there's a standalone municipal election, voter turnout is low. This was a little bit lower than even I could have expected, but that seems to be trending. For the personnel, because we had to meet minimum requirements, we tried very hard to utilize our time constructively. So the poll workers were working with me on inventory assessments, updated signage, lamination, and we went through and labeled the inner and outer envelopes in preparation for the upcoming presidential election cycle. So that's stamp it, sign here, highlight voter signature. So there's a lot of coding that takes place prior to an election, and it's very tedious and it's a lot, it's a lot of volume. So they did a great job taking care of all these things. Every department assists during elections and the personnel are consummate professionals and it's always well done by all. And we pride ourselves on maintaining the integrity and compliance of elections. Continues to be an honor to administrate elections and lead a team facilitating another successful cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Again, I think that's important, you actually took advantage of the time and so.
Well, we had to.
Well, done.
Thank you.
Any comments or any questions for Christine? Very good, thank you. Committee reports. Stephanie?
Well, the Economic Committee met at the beginning of the month, and prior to our meeting, that weekend was Cattail Trails grand opening in the pouring rain.
Right.
And not a very good turnout, I think Peter, Peter went and walked.
Three trails.
Three of the trails. And Mark Yum also came, and Michelle and I were at Cattail Trail. And just so people know, the entrance to Cattail Trail is actually next to the baseball field. It's not across from the track because that's technically the school's property. And there's a sign up there now that says Cattail Trail, so it's officially open after about five years, so thank goodness for that.
Well done.
I do want to remind our citizens that we do have the passport program going until Labor Day. And if you walk the trails at KBCC, Goodwill Hinkley, Mill Island Park, and Cattail Trail, there's QR codes posted. Take a picture of that and then send it through your phone to follow the prompts and it'll follow the prompts. There we go.
Answer the questions, it'll take care of it.
So my apologies, I get all mixed up with QR codes. So that's still going on, and I hope people will take the time to walk the trails and send in their QR codes. So that, that was good. When we met the following Tuesday, the Economic Committee, we had a representative from DEP and Danielle Booton to talk to us about mitigating invasive plants which have been located at Fishbrook, down at the bottom of Fish Hill and Fish Pond. And then we also have some at the Hinkley Boat Landing. And this whole process, we found out, would be costly to the municipality. And it was the discussion that we should at least make sure we have appropriate signage up at the Hinkley Boat Landing, encouraging boat owners to check their boats and take care of the invasive plants. Surprisingly, with the milfoil especially, all you need is like an inch of the plant and then it can re-harvest itself in the water. So it is something that's important. It would cost, again, too much money for the municipality to go and do it, but if everybody takes it upon themselves to be good stewards of our waters, maybe we can make a difference with invasive plants. We also have for the past year been talking about the program offered through AARP called the AARP Age Friendly Community. And Tim Forsman, who I would like to thank for taking this upon himself to see where we can go with this, has been very diligent. And after over a year of talking about this and getting people to sign up to be on a committee, we didn't have anybody that would come forward to actually take hold of this program. And so it has been tabled until further, until the, for the future, until somebody does come forward and says, I'll take charge of this program. The other item from last, this month's meeting was the waterfront plan, and we are ready to do the first reading of the draft, and that will be done on July 11th, and it will be done as a roundtable here in council chambers. So I'm looking forward to that. We are on schedule and I'm very, very pleased with how things have been turning out, especially with the Central Maine Growth Council for their guidance and through this whole process. So again, we're getting close, so first draft reading on July 11th.
Very good, Stephanie, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions?
I would just like to clarify a little bit on this, this program about the invasive species of plants. The committee also discussed the fact that they felt it was actually the state of Maine's responsibility to be policing this and not to be burdensome to municipalities. It was going to require us to hire boat inspectors who would give up their Saturdays, well, Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, and would probably run in two shifts with a minimal grant of about $2,500 total, and the municipality would be responsible for picking up the remainder. And considering at that time when we had this discussion, we still couldn't even find people to mow lawns at the cemeteries, we felt that it would be impossible for us to actually find the staff we needed to do these boat inspections. And we further, the state of Maine did have a representative in the meeting with us via Zoom and explained that we wanted them to promote and post and educate, and that we would do everything we could to help them do that, but it was, should be the state's responsibility to help monitor the state's waters when it came to boat inspections and that sort of thing. So it wasn't, wasn't just that we said, oh no, the safety of our waters is just too expensive to monitor. I just wanted to clarify that a little bit. It was a very in-depth conversation about all of that, and that we did feel it should be the state's responsibility and not municipally done.
Thank you, Michelle.
They did that over, I believe, years ago, we're doing it at Masalonski.
They do, and what happens is that there's a lot of lakes that have associations that actually have the opportunity to get and raise additional funding. This was going to be borne solely by the municipality. We didn't have an association that was going to handle any of this and fundraise for that purpose.
And mostly Danielle was talking about is hiring high school kids, kids out of Lawrence Junior High, 14-year-olds, 15-year-olds.
Yeah.
So, and she hired a whole bunch from Masalonski, she used to chair the school board too, so.
Yep.
And we did talk about the fact that it's the Kennebec River that we're focusing our attention on, which is state water.
Right.
And there's no other municipality that has a program on a river, anywhere in the state, and we thought we were not gonna figure the cause of being the first.
Well, the big thing was the lakes anyway, that's been that way for quite a few years.
See, I grew up too, since Moses through Somerset and starts way up to Rockwood, the Kennebec.
Yep.
Was the county putting money in, all the rest of the towns or cities?
No.
That's what biggest question was right there.
We can definitely publicize it and get the, you know, any kind of signage up, we would be happy to do that, I'm sure.
Right.
But yes, I think that's about where, where, at this point, especially coming into the year, not having any, any other plans or any kind of fundraising, then yeah, I think it falls upon the state if they want to do.
Right, and we did discuss the fact that it should be the state putting up the signage.
Very good, thank you for actually those comments and then also the, and being there and filling us in. Anything else before moving on? All right, so we'll go to the fifth order of business, which is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or standard business and therefore will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests prior to consideration of this portion of the agenda, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered next on the agenda. First is item 2372, ordered the Fairfield Town Council hereby waives the readings of and accepts the minutes for meeting number 2023-10, held on May 24th, 2023. Item 2373, ordered the Town Council hereby approves Treasurers Warrant #120, General Fund, in the amount of $273,179.97, not limited to, but including MSAD 49, KSTD, motor vehicles, and Maine Employee Health Insurance. Item 2374, ordered the Town Council hereby approves and signs the Sewer Certificate of Commitment in the amount of $153,121.50 for the fourth quarter fiscal year sewer billing for the period of 4/1/2023 to 6/30/2023.
So moved.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Yes, on item number 2373, the amount was $273,197.97. You just got to.
Did I say 79? There you go, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I also had a question, where this is the end of our fiscal year coming up, I know we're going to be voting on something, but we have money to support everything so far, right?
There's no discussion allowed on the consent agenda, but.
Right.
And I'm correcting the typo on the amount, sorry about that. Thank you.
Oh, the reason, no, the amount on the agenda was correct, Matt, just he transfers the numbers.
So I said, like you said, 79, 97.
79, 97.
All right.
So, so any more discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Very good, thank you. The sixth order of business, take action on the following items of business as read by the council chair. Item 2375, ordered the Town Council hereby approve special amusement permit renewal for the purposes of music and dancing submitted by the River Jack Tavern located at 230 Main Street, Fairfield.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, any discussion? Steph?
Is the owner still on, online? John is.
I am, yep.
Hi. How did it go last year with your amusement, amusement and, because there were some people concerned about noise level and all that?
As far as I know, I mean, we were kind of late in the game in the summer, so I had a couple of musicians come and they played out on my back deck. As far as I know, I didn't hear from any neighbors in the community that it was too loud, the musicians, I think, were respectful and not, you know, overtly loud or anything like that. So a success, but didn't do too many of them. I'm hoping to do more this summer on Saturday nights, weather permitting, if it ever stops raining.
Well, that was, that's good news then, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I'm done.
So, so. I actually, actually Chief Gould here is here tonight, do you have anything to say or any concerns?
But I'm aware of, we've had no complaints.
Next one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Super. We had a motion and a second.
Yep.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Very good.
Thank you, good luck this summer.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Item 2376, ordered the Town Council hereby authorizes use of contingency funds as may be necessary as of June 30th, 2023 to cover expenditures that may exceed annual budgeted amounts.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion?
Now I'll ask that question.
Now we can discuss the budget. Everything looks really good.
It does, okay.
Everything is well within line, we've been monitoring things quite closely. In fact, you'll find that is the last item on your agenda tonight is to take money from the police department's operating budget, and we didn't know until this afternoon, until the warrant was processed whether there would be enough for that to happen prior to the end of the fiscal year. So we, everybody has been watching really closely, but we are not in danger at this point of anything going over unless something astronomical happens, you know, we discover another broken hot water tank somewhere, but even the community center budget will still be fine and within its ranks. But so this contingency article is just in case something happens and we have the ability to make the account hold when we close the books out, so.
Great.
You'll still have some more warrants that'll be drawn off from this budget, we usually do, we end up with two or three as funds that were committed within this fiscal year, and those invoices keep rolling in, but most of the department heads are pretty quick and, and they try to get the invoices here, sent via email as opposed to waiting for the mail or what have you, when we know we're getting close to the end of the fiscal year, but I think everything is good.
Okay.
They've done a great job.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item 2377, ordered the Town Council hereby considers appointments for the ad hoc Building Advisory Committee for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024. So.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. So we appear to have, I have three applications.
Yep.
Do you want to take those individually?
I got three.
Yep.
Three for the, and those three go up to the.
Building.
The building?
Yep.
Building permit, yep.
Is, my question to you, Michelle, is, is that I know we won five to seven.
Right.
All right, we only got three.
So what, you can, you can do a couple of things. You can appoint these now, and we'll go for another cycle, see if we get any more before we do a kickoff meeting. So at least these folks know that they're, been accepted as part of the committee, keep them while you can get them.
Uh huh.
Or you can wait until you have the number, and what you may have to do, say the end of next month, you decide to go forward with three instead of five.
Okay.
Right, I mean, we're not, it's not like people are beating the door down to come in and get an application to be on this committee, and you may have to just go with what you have and, which, I mean, three is still workable, the only other solution you're gonna have is, because for a while there you didn't have any, was to possibly contemplate amending the council policy that says how this committee needs to be made up and, and go from there, but.
Right.
Which you may still have to do.
And I will have to recuse myself because my son has filled out an application.
Very good.
Not be voting.
So I have, I'm gonna go ahead and read, so I have Robert Sezak, we have Jonathan Thibodeau, and we have Terry York, so all seem to meet the qualifications.
Do we have two of them in town, the same name? Robert Sezak?
No, it's the same.
No, the same one. I thought you owned a book, I didn't know he was in construction.
I don't know.
I didn't know that.
In his, in his earlier, his previous life?
I don't know, maybe in his previous life. Recommended that they have a background in construction, doesn't mean that they.
Yeah, no, he's not a construct.
But he talks about years of work in construction, including masonry, electrical, carpentry, plumbing, and roofing.
That's construction.
Yep.
Right, but that was, that's a long time ago. I don't believe he does it anymore.
No, but he doesn't do it currently, but he has knowledge, so once you have the knowledge, it doesn't.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So we have a motion to accept these.
Maybe get a friendly amendment where Council Thibodeau's made the motion and she's gonna recuse herself.
So I will make the motion.
Thank you.
Making a motion doesn't mean you have to vote for something.
Oh, okay, nevermind then, all right.
But anyway, we'll just, okay, keep it as Matt, but.
All right, all those in favor? And then you're recusing, so, very good.
I'm staying.
Yep, very good. Nice.
So this is disagree ongoing until we get more?
Would it be to our advantage though to set a date?
No, because I think, I was just looking for it, your administrative policy dictates what that structure needs to be. And I think it says it has to be five. You'd have to amend the policy to go forward with three.
So five including the, the counselor?
No.
Five citizens, right? Five citizens, right?
What's in committees ten? It says building committee consists of at least five members, one of whom shall be a town counselor.
Just members, period.
Yeah, so five members, period.
So one more. Unless you mend your.
So you need at least one more member to call a meeting.
So I would, maybe within the next month, somebody will come.
Hopefully somebody will come forward.
That's a, that's a, we're begging, so. We need one more.
Go start knocking on doors.
So thank, thank you. Thanks. Good, good, great start.
And it does say, you know, uh, experience in building and, but it's recommended. So if you're just interested in doing some civic responsibility, please come and fill out a, an appointment application.
So.
Love that.
So the three would be contacted and sworn in or with a, a person.
They, well, they can make an appointment with me, um.
Right. They'll get sworn in. They can get sworn in immediately once.
Yes.
Yeah.
That would be a much better idea.
I would just note that I leave tomorrow afternoon for vacation, so it would probably be the second week of July.
Yep.
We could try to make some time work for everybody.
Very good. To move on a similar vein, we have item twenty-three seventy-eight, ordered the Town Council hereby considers appointments to the ad hoc committee to address the ramifications of PFAS contamination for a one-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
So moved.
Motion is second. Very good. Discussion. We have two, we have Maxwell Kenny. And then Kevin Kitchen.
Right. And does the policies remain the same for this ad hoc committee, Michelle?
No, because council created this committee.
Okay. And I think in light of what's happening at the federal level, building on down, it's going to be very important.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Uh, so I would encourage there to be a few more, uh, folks to join, especially if you, there's a lot of discussion.
Need one more.
Yeah, there's a lot of discussion out there locally and so, um, sort of, you know, typing on a keyboard. I think it's great to sit down and talk and work as a committee and, and move forward to help this town. So.
Yep.
We had recommend, the recommended committee size for this group is seven.
Yep.
Um.
Oh, okay, seven, I'm sorry.
Was seven.
I was thinking.
But it included a maximum of two counselors.
Right.
Um, but yeah, this.
So we need three more.
Ideally, but we didn't have to, it was the.
It was a recommended.
Right, maximum of seven, so.
Yep.
Yeah. So we could.
Just go one step at a time and see what we come up with.
That's good.
But this group probably should plan on by. It would be nice to know that this group was organized and at least able to meet by sometime in the beginning part of August.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's not something we can sit on in our hands and.
I'm hoping to see more, uh, applications and hopefully be able to move on this in, in mid-July. Yep, nice.
Works good.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Excellent. Thank you very much to Maxwell and to Kevin. Item twenty-three seventy-nine, ordered the Town Council hereby adopts updates to the town of Fairfield Town Council Administrative Policies Addendum A fee schedule to include PG Access TV, Crossroads TV fees as submitted, so.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? So.
But I, I did have some questions.
I was going to ask about.
Yeah. Yeah, so. I think that it's nice to see us increasing our rates for Crossroads TV. Um, but I do think that, I, I had some items here that I thought should be a little bit more. And it was like having to deal with DVD sales and just going up five more dollars. And the 4K projector and screen, because that would take, and this is a question for Chad. When somebody's using our 4K projector and screen, who monitors that? Is it set up and then you, you leave or is there somebody on there making sure the equipment's running and all?
So we would set that up and we would leave?
We would.
We would leave. The equipment, it, it's, you know, cut and dry. It's going to, you're going to be able to plug into this for the laptop or anything and it's going to start working and there's not going to be any issues. It's just, it's pretty simple to operate.
Do we have an agreement with people that use our equipment that in case of misuse?
Yeah, there will, there will, but it's all in a contract that they would sign that they are responsible for any damages, anything that goes wrong with it while they are using it. Um, that is definitely in the, in contracts.
Right. Because I was looking at, you know, a hundred and seventy-five dollars and for a half day, three hundred and fifty for a full day.
Right.
And the cost of equipment is not cheap.
Typically, folks that would be renting this equipment, they have event insurance or their company has insurance, right? It's not like.
Right.
We're not sending this out to Little Johnny's birthday party.
Okay.
Right.
Right.
So this is for, you know, the major media pieces that happen for like when presentations, the events, that kind of stuff.
So they have to show insurance first before they move on.
Correct, correct. And, and it's just, it's just like anything else, you know, it's just like for, for someone like me as a videographer that goes into doing business for a town, we have to provide that we have insurance that will cover if something happens.
You're happy with these prices?
I am.
Okay.
I am. A lot of our pricings, you know, are within fifty dollars of what our competitors are. Um, you know, our hourly rates are rated in line with a lot of our competitors. Um, I hate to say competitors, you know, but, you know, we are, and there ain't that many in the area. Um, most of our competitors, you know, are going to undercut a fifty-five dollars an hour by nothing because, you know, um, I have a friend that has a cell phone or an iPad and they're going to make a video for you. And then they're going to find out that it doesn't turn out as good as what we can create and they'll be sorry, so. Um, so it's tough, you know, we're in a tough market. So for me to be able to say that I would charge, you know, seventy-five, eighty-five, a hundred dollars an hour for video work is really hard to do and especially in central Maine. You know, we're not Boston, we're not New York, we're not California, we're, you know, people can charge that kind of a rate unfortunately.
And we're also not a for-profit entity.
And that too.
Right? So, um, our fees are meant to just simply cover our expenses.
Right.
So with the rates of inflation and the expenses of the department, it just inherently brought them up slightly to help cover that. But we are a nonprofit.
So I'd just take a moment to say, actually, take advantage of the, you can find these rates. Uh, I think you'll find the service that Chad gives us on Crossroads TV is excellent and some of the services that you provide. So I would actually put a plug in, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Very good.
Very good quality work, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or concerns? All right, all those in favor? Thanks. Thank you, Chad. Item twenty-three eighty, ordered the Town Council in accordance with the Somerset County Charter, hereby selects a municipal officer, official, sorry, to serve as a voting member for the upcoming special caucus on July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three at six PM at the Somerset County Courthouse, Forty-One Court Street, Skowhegan, to fill a vacancy for Register of Deeds, term set to expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion.
Who wants to do it? I know we have Superior Court.
So, are you, are you too?
Did you want to do it, Peter? It's just going for five minutes and then.
I'll take it, yeah.
You want to do it? You can do it.
Oh, yes, yes, that's good. Yeah, actually, I'm driving to Boston that day, so, yes.
And you can also Zoom, so if you can't.
Gives you a break too because you was on the.
Yeah. That's one.
On the budget committee, can you Zoom this meeting?
Um, I did see in that email that there was going to be a link available to Zoom. Um, that was the, the one that came through this week. We had a lot of additions, yeah. That it didn't contain the Zoom link, but it said it was supposed to be one coming.
Yeah.
Super.
So I will nominate Peter to attend, um, the caucus for this. This, what's her position? Registered.
Registered.
Registered. Thank you. So motion by Stephanie, second.
Second.
All those in favor? Very good.
One abstention, Peter Lawrence.
Abstention, yep.
Yep, thank you.
You don't want to vote for yourself?
You could.
Don't be right.
Item twenty-three eighty-one, ordered the Town Council hereby confirms the town manager's appointments of David Huff as Animal Control Officer effective May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Gary Trevor McKenzie as firefighter EMT effective June fifth, twenty-twenty-three. Dean Harding as firefighter EMT effective June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and Shannon Blodgett as Police Detective effective July first, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
I have a question, Chief. Did we lose our detective or?
Nope, it's just moving her duties into that.
Right.
So we're two detectives.
No, we have a captain that, uh, has never really had the ability to do a lot of investigations. So a lot of the small investigations just sat idle. And Detective Blodgett, currently now Detective Blodgett, would handle a lot of those while she was doing her dispatch duties. And it just got too overwhelming, so now she's just going to do detective work.
Yeah, she'll be excellent too. She does a.
And she's been extremely busy. We've had a lot of search warrants. She's been working cases really hard. Yes.
Chief, how's it working, uh, with the Somerset Humane Society?
Uh, seems to be working really good.
Good.
Yep. I've had, I've had no complaints, but I know that they're, they're full of cats right now.
Yep.
You know, they're, they're like every other, um, uh, facility. They're, you know, they're flirting with being full all the time.
Right. And it is a very small humane society too, so.
It is, yes.
But I was just wondering how it was going. It's been about a year now since.
Been just about, yeah. And I've had no calls or complaints about it.
Good, good. And then I have a question for Chief Bickford. With these two hires, how do we stand now with our employees? Are we at, at full staff here or?
No, we're not at full staff. We'll still have two openings on the fifty-six hour a week. I did offer a job and it was accepted today for the forty-hour a week utility person. Um, so hopefully next council meeting, they'll be on here for approval.
So that means they'll be down one then, if things go well or are you still looking?
No, it'll still be two fifty-six.
Two fifty-six.
Have six staff persons that work the fifty-six hour shift and we were down to two regular members.
We are making gains.
We are making gains though.
This, um, Dean Harding actually right now works forty hours a week until he fills his six months probation. So we can train him so he doesn't fail when he goes alone on fifty-six. So.
And that's all the detail about personnel we're going to give in this meeting.
So we're getting there.
But that, that's the procedural thing. That's, that's procedural in general.
In general.
Yes, because that forty hour, the forty-hour a week position that was in our budget was not adopted by the union during contract negotiations. We are able to use that position as a training platform for regular unionized positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Any more discussion? Nice to see some positions getting filled, so good work. All those in favor? Very good. Uh, item twenty-three eighty-two, ordered the Town Council hereby considers and awards quotes for the Fire Department Mask Fit Test Machine up to the amount of seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars to be expended from the Fire Department Reserve Account.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion, Chief.
Can you explain how this machine works, please? Because everybody has to have a mask.
Yes.
So how, exactly what's happening with this machine?
So this machine is a no-cheat way to fit somebody for an SCBA mask, which is the fireside mask that we wear, the tank on our back. And EMS, people wear N ninety-five mask. Right now we test them, we put a little hood over their head with the mask on and pour a chemical in it. And they have to do so many exercises. Uh, so if they smell it, they're supposed to tell you. But there's no way to, to tell they could really smell it. And we bought new SCBAs a couple of years ago and they require this machine to be tested on that particular mask. Right now we've borrowed one. When we can get it.
I mean, I really think it's in our best interest to have this machine because we are responsible for two communities.
Right.
And I think it's, um, to be self-sufficient, something like this is needed.
So we don't count on a third party.
Yeah. So how much money do you have in the, in the, uh, fire reserve account that?
Last I knew, and I haven't checked it in a little while, it was fifty thousand and, and some change.
Like the exact number? Cause I got the report today before the meeting. Fifty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents.
All right, so that's money to cover.
There's plenty of money to cover.
Yeah.
More than, and this is a long-term, the machine lasts quite a while.
And this is not, and to clarify, this is the Fire Department Reserve Account, not the Fire Department Equipment Reserve Account. Those are two totally different things.
Yep.
So this is the regular reserve account that never has a balance in it of more than fifty thousand dollars. It's used for expenses just like this. Uh, we did look at the Fire Department's operating budget to see whether or not it had the funds sufficient enough to cover this. Um, it seems really close. And if it didn't, then we were just going to have to come back and have it come from the other. So if we expend from the Fire Department Reserve Account, whatever funds that are left in the operating budget would get moved in, back into that account to reimburse it, to bring it back up to the fifty thousand if it dips under anyway. So it was just better and cleaner and safer at this point to, to use the reserve account, not knowing what could potentially come in because fire is a little bit closer to the bottom line than what the police department wants, so.
Well, I, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the bid for Accutec HIS at, uh, a total cost of seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, which will include, um, the option for a five-year warranty and four cleanings and calibrations and also provide remote training for our firefighters.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Right. Item twenty-three eighty-three, ordered the Town Council hereby authorize the trigger to expand the remaining Somerset County Central Square software conversion balance due of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents to be appropriated from the Police Department Fiscal Year twenty-two, twenty-three operating account. Uh, reference action, item twenty-two dash seventy-six on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Chief?
So if you recall, when we were in the budget process, we had put that amount of money into the budget line. And you, uh, thought it was best that we pull it out and hope that we had, uh, that money available to us when the budget season was over in our current operating budget. Um, and that is the case. What does appear that we will have enough money to cover that, um, through our general operating budget this year.
We also actually discussed that we would use ARPA if it wasn't in the operating budget.
Right.
So it is there and so now would be the time to make sure we did the appropriation before the end of the fiscal year. We could have come back to you in July and asked you to retro it, but it, it's just cleaner if we do it tonight and get it taken care of. So it's definitely there and we have that. Um, and then what happens is, is, um, the fifty thousand dollars that you had appropriated before back in June of two thousand twenty-two was set up into a designated account. This thirty-seven will also go into that account and then as those invoices come due with the county, it'll just get paid from, from that account. It'll already be there, so.
Any more discussion?
Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Good, so we are finished on, on those items. Now we can move along to the seventh order of business, which are council workshop and other business. First is to discuss charter commission procedure and timeline. Any, any help on that, Michelle?
Certainly. So first of all, you did, you received a couple of things in this packet. One, everybody should have gotten a current charter.
Yep.
You also have a suggested timeline here, which has a slight amendment to it. The very first thing, that's a public hearing posting for July and needed to be held on the twelfth. That actually doesn't need to happen. This was going off from a timeline from the last time we created a charter amendment commission. I'm not really sure why a public hearing was held prior to the town council asking for a charter commission, but either way, it's not art of the law, so that saves you a little bit of time. You also received sections from a municipal association's information packet regarding municipal home rule and charters, the copies of the titles in Title Thirty-A, that section that deals with charters and charter amendments, and a couple of different articles from the main townsmen and various different legal opinions on some specific questions that I thought might be pertinent. So our charter, when it was redone back in two thousand and sixteen, the, it created a need for a charter committee, which is different than a charter commission. The charter committee is five people that you are appointed by council every five years just to make sure that the charter is still pertinent, working the way it should be, and that it hasn't sat on a shelf and has a bunch of deficiencies because state law has changed or, or the community's priorities have moved on. So that group did meet. It was a little complicated, and then there was COVID, and there was a couple of different things. But basically, what come out of that, those meetings was, and councillor Thibodeau can explain that even further for you, but in a nutshell, there were a couple of grammar pieces or general corrections that could be done. But mostly, it was regarding secret ballot town meetings and the timing of town meetings. So when the charter commission was done from throughout two thousand and sixteen, the town meeting was a huge volume of their conversation. I think it probably took up easily fifty percent of their time, if not more. There were items that were added for the requirements for annual town meeting, which was the mailer, the public hearing, the explanation pieces, to help drum up more interest in town meeting and ensure that folks had the information to feel like they were engaged. That's been going on now, obviously, since two thousand and sixteen when that was put into place. Well, seventeen now for that annual town meeting. And we have found that the only time that we had increase in town meeting participation was, of course, when we had secret ballot town meeting during COVID. We got you the results for this past annual town budget meeting. All of those different pieces combined. So if the possibility of switching to a secret ballot town meeting was something the community wanted to do, you would have to create a charter commission. And that vote for that charter commission members would be in November, and they would flush that process through and see if that was, in fact, the recommendation that would go forth to the community, or maybe it wasn't needed, and there are other steps that you can take. And the reason for this was to be able to garner efficiencies. Right now, the charter says that town meeting must be in May. The town council already has the authority to make annual town meeting article questions referendum. The difference is, is that you would have to have the annual town meeting in May, and then we would then in turn have the secret ballot in June for the school, because you would not be able to combine the two. The reason why we were able to combine the two during COVID was during the governor's state of emergency, it gave the council the authority it needed to override the charter. Once that state of emergency ended, that ability to override the charter and to couple those two elections together is now gone. And you have no choice but to have your annual town meeting the second Monday in May. So that's where we're at.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
I really think that something like this, because when the committee met, that was the major conversation. And I think it's worthwhile for us to have a charter commission established to look into that. When you take a look at this past election and our municipal clerks' report, when only two-point-four-four percent of the people that can vote, vote, maybe we need to look at maybe making it more simple, simple, not more, making it simpler for people so that they don't have so many meetings or vote times to come out to vote on. So maybe they could take a look at just the budget meeting, and that's where you can raise or lower the amounts before it becomes final, and then go and, once that discussion's been had, go and do the secret ballot vote in June. It would also help to, one, it'd be one less meeting that people would have to go to in order to vote, because they could do the school budget and the municipal budget at the same time. I think it's worthy of discussion for a commission, and I would like to see us move forward with the charter commission.
Other comments, John, I could see?
Well, no, I, I don't, I disagree with the aspect of basically eliminating the town meeting. I mean, we got, the voting turnout this last time was just so pathetic. And that can happen again and again. At least with a town meeting, we do get a decent amount of people there, and it, you know, moves things along.
Fifty-nine, you gotta look to who had vested interest in the town meeting. I can sit right there and say, okay, town employees. We look at the budget, the department heads, and the employees that are vested. You got the nonprofits invested. I looked out there, three-quarters were there. There were not much residents.
But those folks are, if they're voting, right.
They are residents.
They're, they're, they're voting.
We're looking at additional outsiders to say something.
Yeah.
I know the employees and the nonprofits are employees, but we're looking for other entities on their opinions, too, and we're not getting that.
But they're there and allowed to speak if, following the rules of the meetings.
Right.
And so we get their advice. I think that the charter commission, to me, is a, is a good idea. And whether, who knows what they're going to come up for recommendation?
Right.
But at least have the discussion, right? So.
Yeah, and, and this, there would still have to be a town meeting on the budget, because that's the way it's worded right now.
So, well, what would happen is, so the way this works is that there are, if you declare that you at the town council would like to form a charter commission to look at amending the town charter for this, this purpose, then six members of the community would need to take out nomination papers and be on the ballot in November for the charter commission. The last time you did this in two thousand and fifteen, I think there were some vacancies. You didn't have enough people to take papers out for, so they ended up ultimately being appointed. The town council does appoint three individuals themselves. So it's a, it's a committee of nine, a commission of nine. The three appointments don't have to be residents, and one of them can be a town councillor, which we had a councillor the, the last time we did this. It was you, councillor Thibodeau. And then they would go through their process, and usually that requires, similar to what I did last time, was input from the public. There were lots of informational meetings. They talked to folks, they had people come in, they discussed what it is that they were looking to do, and then they came back, and then they do a report, and a draft report comes to the council. And then after that timeframe, there's a final report that's done. And then even after all of that is said and done, if there is a change to be made to the charter, that still has to go to the community to be approved. It's not like it just happens and it's done. So there's a lot of conversations that would happen between now and that piece to happen. A municipality still has to have a budget approving process. They don't have to have an annual town meeting simply because of the fact that if you look at the town council in Winslow, or if you look at the city council in Waterville, their council approves their budget, and it doesn't even go to the voters. They have budget hearings and they have input, but the council themselves actually approve the budget. So Fairfield's a unique situation, and we're, we're a very unique community in which we have a town charter, we have a town council form of government, but we actually have an open town meeting. So that nuance doesn't usually go hand in hand. And then it would be up to the charter commission to recommend whether or not that's the piece that stays. Or, and quite frankly, it's not, anything is on the table at this point. I mean, the entire charter is on the table. There isn't anything going on with our charter at this point that has put us out of sorts with state law. We did do a revision not that long ago, where not, well, it was two thousand and nineteen, when we realized the section about appointing for a vacancy for the school board was actually against state law. So we were able to do that revision and just get that corrected. But if you're going to change town meeting from being in May to June, that warrants an amendment which has to have a charter commission. That's not a quick little fix. That literally changes the structure. If you think about it, nuts and bolts of government in the town of Fairfield, because town meeting was always in May, and if you're going to do something to move it in June to align it with the school board election, that's a fundamental governmental change.
All right, and that, and that would be up to the commission.
Yeah, and that would be up to the commission to discuss and recommend or not recommend. And then it would be up to the public to talk about during public hearings, and then it would be up to the public to vote on in order for that to happen. So it's, it's a relatively long process.
Thoughts, discussion, myself? I think it's, I would move forward with the commission, and then we'll see what they, where they come. I think it's been a while since you've had one. Right, so I think it's worthwhile to always be looking.
Times have changed, so.
At least have the discussion, right?
Like an action item for the next agenda?
We have time to do an action item for your July twelfth agenda.
Yes.
So you can vote on creating, putting it forward. We'll get the wording for you exact. And just so, we did get, I, I did have the clerk pull together some information for us regarding your annual town meeting participation. So this year, we did have fifty-nine voters that attended town meeting. We had one person attend the public hearing. Last year, we had forty-six people attend town meeting. We had three people attend the public hearing. In two thousand twenty-one, when it was in June and it was secret ballot, we had a hundred and fifty-two with one person at the public hearing. In two thousand twenty, when it was secret ballot and aligned with the state primary, we had one thousand fifty people participate on the budget with zero people at the public hearing. And then prior to COVID, it was seventy-two in nineteen with four at the public hearing. Eighteen, it was fifty-two at town meeting and none at the public hearing. And then prior to the charter amendment, it was fifty-nine in seventy, seventy-four, forty-one, sixty-three, seventy-one, eighty-eight. So we're, we're losing ground with participants, and it doesn't appear to be going up any, except for when it was secret ballot, with all of the additional pieces that we've put in to make sure people are informed and, and know how to participate and be able to participate. So that's, that's that information.
Thank you.
So, I guess we move forward an action, as an action item on the next meeting?
It's already written.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sounds good.
Also, the next one, we discuss the August council schedule.
So, wow, this is me typically. The main town city manager's annual training is going to be happening August eighth through the eleventh. And so you have a council meeting scheduled for August ninth.
Yeah.
What we've done before in the past is we've either done one meeting in the middle of the month, we've done just the last meeting at the end of August, or we've kept both meetings and I'm just not here. So wanted to discuss that.
Thoughts, discussion? The clerk?
Yep, so I have pre-planned to schedule around this any public hearings that we need to, and deadlines we need to meet, so. That's all very difficult.
You know, August sixteenth is in the middle of the month.
Yeah, my personal preference would be looking, I think it's tough to have a meeting. There are a lot of times I like to have, you know, information from Michelle. So I think it's, I wouldn't like a meeting without her, to be totally honest. I think waiting to the end of the month is a little long. I like to have, I think the middle of the month works well.
Sixteenth, I think would be a good.
I think it would work, I think it would work well.
Well, we actually could still have our two meetings in August, just being the sixteenth and the thirtieth. August is a five-week month. So on the thirtieth, it would still be two weeks until the next meeting, which would be September thirteenth.
Good thought.
So that was, we would still stick with our program.
Yep, I got no problem with that. Any thoughts, Peter? How your, how does your schedule work? Does that work okay?
Yep.
Yeah.
Anniversary that.
On the thirtieth or the sixteenth?
I'm not available.
Happy anniversary.
We'll make it a fast meeting.
I'll schedule up for you.
So, yeah, so I think the sixteenth and thirtieth, do we have to?
Sixteenth and the thirtieth? And then we also too, because we, you know, some new, our new members, we do kind of monitor these things. The reason why the one meeting in August usually works is that you sometimes don't have enough business to do that second one. So that's the other thing, too. We'll, we'll keep you apprised of all of that, but this works perfectly. That'll be great.
If you do sixteen, thirty, if we don't need thirty, we can cancel it off on the sixteen.
Agreed.
Good. That works, thank you.
Thank you. So this brings us to the final part, which is to discuss other council business. John, any thoughts? Stephanie?
Well, for the last month to six weeks, the town manager and I have been in conversations with K V Cog concerning the community resilience partnership. And it has involved several surveys. And we're currently at the point now where we're focusing on the community center and making it a shelter in case of severe weather and a place for our citizens to come. And so we've, it's a work in progress as I speak. So we're looking at prioritizing our needs here with the kitchen. Basically, we don't have a working stove. So that would be the priority. And what we can do is apply for two grants. One will be, is due July seventh, and then another one round will come up in the, in the fall. So right currently, we're going to focus on the kitchen, get a working stove in there. And then after that, seeing how things go, we will branch off and do, we're suggesting LED lighting throughout the building, replacing the doors and the windows. And if there's another grant round after that, taking a look at the bathrooms. Of course, we also have our situation with our water heater. So that's also going to be considered at some level if, if we can afford to do something. And of course, it would be all energy efficient. This is coming through the efficiency main program. So hopefully, I'll keep, I'll keep you posted as we proceed. We're also looking at CED S grant that has already been applied for, and fingers crossed, we'll hear from them soon.
Thanks, thank you, Stephanie. I think it's a great way to, to help out the community, but also help this community center. And if we can use grant money to do it instead of tax dollars to do it, or our own tax dollars to do it, that's even better.
They're, they are tax dollars.
Yes, they're kind of, yeah, well, at least we split them out around fifty states, and we get a little portion of it, so, nice. Peter?
No, I just want to thank all the works on the work they're doing. I've been seeing them out, especially, I seen the projects on the roads, on the town roads, and they're hard work trying to get Green Road going up. I know the weather hasn't been cooperating on that. And plus, I want to thank all the rest of the town employees out there, doing a great job.
Thank you.
They've definitely been busy with all this rain. They were out back in my neighborhood just filling in where the ditches have run and eroded, so, yep.
So I have two things real quick, like, I'm not sure if they have my final part of my packet, but I'll just talk about the, there's the third annual hydro fest on the Kennebec, which is July fifteenth, sixteenth, from twelve to four at the Higley boat launch. So we've been talking about try to use the boat launch more and try to take advantage of our natural resources. So let's take advantage of the river and come out and see the boat races on the fifteenth and sixteenth.
And they are fun to watch.
Yeah, sure. So that's, that'd be fun, again, fifteenth and sixteenth of the Higley boat launches, twelve to four.
I was just, oh, God, hell of a bar. All you sports and collectors out there, or any?
I was just talking to Alabot. All you sports and collectors out there, or any collectors, there's an event this weekend right here at the community center, July 2nd, 10 to 4. There's a collector's fest, the First Central Main Collector's Fest. And Mike, I think, Hewitt, the Craddy, places putting it on this weekend. They're having a little game on the, on the stage and everything else.
Here.
The community side.
10 to 4.
July 2nd, 10 to 4.
Thank you, Peter. My last thing, I just to put a plug in for the PFAS Working Group. Again, we see a lot of folks that want to talk about what's going on in the town, but I think this is where you actually put, you know, some of the, some of the words and energy actually put to purpose and work together, so I appreciate that. And probably the same thing goes for our building committees as well, so let's fill those out and make sure that this is your chance to help your community and be part of that, and you're not locked in for five years. It's a one-year term to start, so I'd appreciate that. That's everything we have for tonight, so a motion to recess.
Motion to recess.
Second.
Second.
All in recess.